I need to gab.
That's a, that's a good one.
That's a good one. All right. This meeting has begun. Welcome, everyone. Uh, welcome, everyone, to the, um, our charter alternative school meeting. She's, she's got a script for me to read. Not very good at that. Charter renewal hearing for today is called to order. I already did that. Um, for day, for today's hearing, I'm supposed to say all this stuff because this is a legal thing and we have to say, I'm getting it now. We have to say legal things for legal events in order for them to be legal and everybody to do what they're supposed to do. So, and seeing this is my first legal, legal thing, I get to read like everyone else is doing. So, um, y'all excuse, excuse me for not being able to do my normal off the cuff. This is what I do, but today we're reading. For that, for today's hearing, all materials are posted on the PPS website under the board and meetings tabs. Um, this meeting has, is being streamed live on PPS TV services on website and will be available on the PPS communications page for viewing. That's it. Welcome to today's charter renewal hearing for LeMond Charter French Immersion Charter School. And welcome to Chouka.
Chouka.
Chouka. I am so sorry. I butchered that.
You wouldn't, you were not gonna have any better luck with the last name.
Resbani.
Resbani.
Resbani, LeMond's director. Um, let's see. Sponsors of charter schools in Oregon are responsible for evaluating charter school performance and determining whether or not to renew the contract of the charter school based on its compliance with the law and the contract and its performance in three, um, domains: academic, financial, and organizational. The National Association of Charter Schools Authorizations, or NACSA, recommends in its Principles and Standards for Quality Charter School Authorizing that a formal review renewal application be used as part of a fair and transparent process. Um, this renewal application ensures that all charter schools entering the renewal process have an equal opportunity to present, present data and information relevant to their request for contract renewal. It also ensures that the renewal decision is based on the renewal criteria specified in Oregon's laws, ORS 338 dot zero six five and OAR, um, five eight one dash zero two six dash zero four zero zero. It's a lot of reading. I don't know how people get used to. Yeah, this, all this reading. I'd have been off the cuff. We'd have been done already and moved on to the next thing. Let's get back legal again. Um, charter school renewal evaluation includes, um, a review of annual performance reports and financial audits, annual site visits, and any other information mutually agreed upon by the sponsor and the charter school. The annual performance framework and report is the top, the tool used to formalize this review. The criteria used to decide to renew are: Is it in compliance with this chapter and all other applicable state and federal laws? Is it in compliance with the charter of public charter schools? Is it meeting or working toward meeting the student performance goals and agreements specified in the charter or any other written agreement between Portland Public Schools and the public charter school governing body? Is it fiscally stable and has used a sound financial management system? Is it in compliance with any renewal criteria specified in the charter of the public charter school? So for today's hearing, the school will make an opening statement followed by a 10-minute school presentation. Then there will be a 10, then there will be 10 minutes for testimony in support of the renewal and 10 minutes if there is any testimony to oppose the renewal. Once that is concluded, we will have an opportunity to ask questions. We have some suggested questions, da, 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 and the materials, and there we go. Uh, let's see. Ms. Resbani, was that better?
That was perfect, actually.
I'm killing the game right now. Would you like to provide your opening?
Steven, you can lead up to me.
Perfect. So, um, thank you, Director Green.
That was a lot.
It is a lot. It is a lot. Thank you for, thank you for, I'm leading it, so I'm, now I'm gonna do my part. So, um, what we're gonna do in the charter school office and multiple pathways for graduation is just to share our introduction before we hand it over to, um, our school leader. So, uh, good afternoon, um, Chair Green, Director DePass, Director Lowry. Um, LeMond French Immersion Charter School is a K-8 charter school located on East Burnside in the Buckman neighborhood. LeMond currently enrolls about 375 students with an enrollment cap of 450 students. LeMond submitted a written request for charter renewal on January 2nd, 2023 in accordance with the charter school renewal process outlined in ORS 338 point oh six five. Per statute, the next step of that process, and our purpose here today, states that, quote, "Within 45 days after receiving a written renewal request from a public charter school's governing body, the sponsor shall hold a public hearing regarding the request for renewal," end quote. Evaluation for renewal includes a review of annual performance reports, financial audits, site visits, and any additional information jointly or jointly agreed upon by the sponsor and the charter school. This information is formally collected in the school's annual performance framework and audit. At this point, I'm gonna turn it over to our charter director, Tara O'Neal, to share more specifically about that information.
Thank you. A little bit of information about LeMond and our annual performance framework information. Um, because there are no state assessment results for 2019, 20, or for 2021 due to the pandemic, there's no comparative state assessment data for two years of the current charter term. But in the years for which we do have data, LeMond has regularly performed at levels of meets or exceeds on academic achievement measures, as could be seen in the, uh, framework and report summary table that was presented at the last meeting. In addition, over the course of the charter term, the school has exhibited financial sustainability and predominantly meets both financial and organizational standards on its annual performance frameworks throughout the course of this charter term. The board committee has previously been provided with copies of the charter school renewal application for LeMond, the 2122 Oregon School Profile, and the 2122 Annual Performance Framework and Report, which includes that rolling summary of academic, financial, and organizational performance over the previous three years. LeMond opened in 2012 and is in its 11th year of operation, having successfully completed charter renewals in 2015 and 2018. This is LeMond's third charter renewal. So per, uh, ORS 338 oh six five, this renewal shall be for a minimum of five years, but may not exceed 10 years. LeMond has requested a 10-year renewal of its charter, which is consistent with the third renewal terms of other established charter schools sponsored by PPS. And with that, we'll introduce LeMond's school director, Chouka Resbani, as soon as I get to their presentation.
And I wanted to say thank you for having us, Director Green, Director Lowry, Director DePass in the ether. Um, and, uh, you asked to see kids, so I do have some videos. I didn't bring them physically here, but I did review some videos to show later. But first, I just wanted to give some basic background information. And this is a little bit like just reading again, so I apologize for that, but it felt like I should share some basics. Um, so going on to the first slide, as has been said, we opened in 2012. We have approximately 385, 380 students. We serve kindergarten through eighth grade. And we have two classes per grade. We have 41 staff people. They're very ethnically, racially, culturally gender diverse folk, um, uh, who have a sort of very international flavor to them. Um, and it's a, something that we really value as an IB school. We'll talk about that. We have a one location now that's closed into downtown on East Burnside. Next slide, please. Um, we're a full French immersion environment, which means that we are instructing other subjects like math and science in French. So, um, a lot of times people ask, are students coming to us already speaking French? Predominantly, no. Predominantly, these are cross-section Portland Public School kids. Maybe parents have an affinity to the French language because they studied it in college, or maybe they have a relative, or maybe they're coming from a Francophone country. But, um, a lot of our kids just come there because parents believe in immersion as, as an educational model. Uh, in kindergarten, most of our, we start with a basically full immersion model. Uh, they predominantly speak French in class, starting in K. Um, in fact, we don't even teach English in kindergarten. The first time they start having English class is in first grade. And then they have English class, um, all the way up through eighth grade, but most of the subjects are taught in French. Um, and obviously with a mix of English at first and then more and more French as the year goes on. Usually by about winter break, we try to stop using as much English, even in K. And, uh, it's amazing how quickly the students start to pick it up and, and speak. Uh, in middle school, we do use more English again, just because we are, uh, these, our students are gonna be going off into high schools that may or may not even have French programs. Um, so they need to be prepared and meet, meeting science standards, math standards, being able to assess, uh, do assessments like OSAS in, in English. So they have more, uh, English starting in middle school. Slide. A lot of people ask us, why, why French? Why is that the language? Um, there are lots of reasons that we chose French. Cultural awareness, it's spoken, it's a language spoken widely throughout the world. Um, it is one of the main languages of diplomacy. It's one of the six language, official languages of the United Nations. And because of the shared grammar and linguistic similarities, it often can help with learning English as well because of all the root words that come from, from French. So, uh, lots of different reasons to use French. But, uh, we also believe that immersion just as a, as a model is what's most important. Not so much our friend, you know, we just happen to like French, but any, we just believe in immersion because of the brain benefits it has for kids and, and all of the, the different things that we think it impacts to students. So, um, we, we do try to predominantly use French, except for English Language Arts and some specials. Uh, art, uh, music, PE, actually, right now, our art teacher and our PE teacher are both, uh, speak French, but our music teacher doesn't. We try to get somebody who knows what they're doing in, in whatever that area is for specials. So sometimes they speak French, not always. Um, we don't use the national curriculum of France. Instead, we're looking for international best practices. So our math is from Singapore. It's what the Singaporean government came up with as being the best math program. And, you know, internationally, that's, it's really a well-regarded program, so that's the math program we use. Um, but we teach it in French. So there are a lot of layers to everything that our teachers do, a lot of lift that they have to, to, um, take in addition to just teaching, which is already a challenge. As everybody knows, they're having to do it, um, often with translating a lot of materials into French. Uh, we think we have a, provide a well-rounded education. We have music, art, PE. And then in third grade, uh, everyone also starts taking Spanish language. So it's a, um, three languages of instruction at the school. Um, we use a lot of hands-on, context-based learning. And, um, we were just recently, in fact, pretty much during the pandemic, we received our certification as an IB school. So, um, that is a pretty rigorous process that involves, um, sort of showing that you have a lot of different things in place, um, to, to support getting that IB status. Um, it's a philosophy and an approach to education. It's not a pre-prescribed curriculum, but it does emphasize international perspectives and equitable approaches. Um, it's very much about creating global awareness in students. Um, so that has been something that we're really proud of, to have been recognized as an IB world school and to start implementing it. Um, we're really seeing a difference in terms of students, um, engaging in project-based learning and, uh, doing all the things that I think, uh, learning the tools of collaboration and all of that sort of thing that really can make a difference for kids who are entering into the world right now, especially. Um, some of our academic achievements, um, I was trying to look for things that are, uh, external and obvious. I mean, I think, to me, our academic achievements are when I see the kids who are successfully speaking French and who are, um, engaging in these projects and developing these really creative things. But in terms of like sort of the objectively measurable stuff, um, um, School Digger and some of the sites that, that, you know, assess schools based on mostly OSAS and test, state test results, we're ranked 13th of the 706 Oregon Public Schools, elementary schools, and fourth among the middle schools in terms of our OSAS results. Um, 90% of our eighth graders met OSAS standards in ELA, and 80% of the eighth graders met math standards. So, um, overall, I think compared to, uh, state norms, we're, um, high achieving compared to national norms, which we do track as well by looking at map, um, assessment results in math and English and science. We are, um, achieving fairly well on those as well. Um, since graduating its first eighth-grade class, which was in 2020, uh, the pandemic hit us hard in our first graduating class, which was very sad. But nevertheless, 100% of our graduating, um, eighth graders that year received, uh, pre-ninth grade French credits, high school credits for, um, for, uh, for French, and 93% of them received pre-high school Algebra I and II credits. So a lot of our students and leave the school with almost a year of high school already completed credit-wise. Um, and today, all of our graduates have been awarded the Global Seal of Bilinguality. So it's an acknowledgement of, of the fact that they really have become, um, bilingual, um, functionally, functionally bilingual. So, um, after weathering the pandemic, we're again finally feeling like we're moving forward as, instead of being in survival mode, which I think most schools felt like they were in survival mode for a while. Um, we are really focused on our IB implementation, which is a lot of project-based learning. Um, so for example, our kindergarten students, they built mini-cities out of recycled materials as they were exploring their unit of inquiry of sharing the planet. It's one of the pillars of IB. So they designed, um, various, uh, things that they thought would be helpful to use in, um, in the planet. This was, I think, talking about the solar panels and how solar panels can be used on a house. Then they received a whole bunch of recycled materials and started to build mini-cities out of those materials. Um, we have our fifth graders engaging in a video exchange with the school and Dakar Senegal. Um, and they're looking at what their lives and schools look like on different parts of the world. So they did this video exchange, and I had a presentation at the end, which is one of the, so they create videos and they send them back and forth. Um, and I will say that it definitely feels like we're the ones living in any sort of third world. Their school is amazing and, and, and very advanced, uh, compared to resources, which has been, um, fun for the students to see. Uh, we don't have a cafeteria. They do. That was a big point of contention among our kids. Um, so, uh, moving forward, we're, um, continuing to focus on outreach to underrepresented populations. We want to increase the diversity of our student body to more accurately reflect the diversity of our district. And we're constantly reevaluating our program and looking to best practices from around the globe to see what are, what are other places doing? What could we do better? Um, and helping that inform our instruction and planning. Um, so that's sort of the end of my little presentation part, although I have the link there to the fifth grade video exchange with Dakar.
We're definitely watching the link.
You gotta watch the link. It's awesome.
Definitely.
They did a great job. It's really.
I love everything you had to say.
Thank you.
But we're definitely watching.
Keep testing. Forgot to test this, so.
And this is Gecko Productions because it's the Gecko class. Each class has an animal mascot. So they're the Geckos.
I'm already in love with this. Anytime the baby start doing something.
The sound comes on in a minute.
Okay, good.
Let me see the kids. Hopefully we get sick.
No, 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 it's cool.
Do we?
This is our classmate Gerard, and he is a, and he is six years old.
You have a science annual health class.
What are your schedules like?
Est-ce que vous apprenez d'autres langues où l'on est en train de travailler?
C'est quoi la matière que vous préférez?
It's a pleasure.
The majority of our classmates choose their class.
We do specials like PE, art, music, and French.
Quel jeu est-ce que tu joues ton matin fait?
On joue dodgeball et free style.
Tu portes des lettres de sport?
Notre école en porte de uniforme.
Do you guys have culture?
Est-ce que tu portes des jolies?
Um, our teachers are nice.
Est-ce que vous avez les, euh, des uniformes à l'école?
Et est-ce que vous portez des t-shirts?
What kind of books do you read?
Do you guys have a webber?
Okay, I'm sure if you believe.
Do you think that actually they still love?
You have any favorite music or songs? What's the food like though?
Are your teachers strict?
What's your classroom like?
Notre classe est très bruyante.
What's that?
Yeah, it's true.
Action.
I already asked only question.
So they'll send, um, this video over. They'll get a video back. Um, and they're also learning, uh, to sign too, just because I think it's fun.
Okay. That's you and then we'll talk. Go ahead.
Uh, okay. So that was, um, that was really my presentation portion. Uh, and I think we now have some, some testimony and support from, I asked, uh, some of our graduates if they talked a little bit about the effect of their education, and I had, I picked one of them to share here.
And they made a video?
Yep.
I like videos with kids in them. Let's go.
Hi, my name is Isabel Bojo, and I'm an alumni from LeMond French Immersion Public Charter School. My time at LeMond was honestly so incredible, and I feel like I was able to make so many connections with my classmates, my friends, my teachers. All of my teachers were so amazing and wonderful. You could just tell that they cared about me, about my education, and I knew every day when I walked into school, there would be someone I could talk to, be it a classmate, a teacher, a friend. And I feel like because I spent eight years with the same group of people, I was really able to make those important connections. And I feel like I could honestly reach out to any of those 32 classmates and just have a conversation with them, which is so nice because I know a lot of people at my high school didn't get that chance. Um, speaking of high school, I feel like LeMond really helped me, um, prepare for high school. I mean, it gave me four, uh, credits of French on my transcript, which is just amazing. It's, it's so nice. Um, and it let me go into AGS two instead of AGS three, which is basically a higher level of math class, which is really nice because I feel just like ahead of my math, and it just like helps you go, just yeah, just more prepared for my math education and just doing myself. So that's pretty cool. Le monde c'était vraiment super. Je trouve que ça m'a vraiment aidé à me sentir plus connectée avec ma famille en France parce que moi je suis française et je suis américaine. Donc, je pense que parler du français pour à l'école c'était vraiment super. Je pense que ça m'a vraiment aidé à me sentir, hum, plus, je veux pas dire capable, mais je pense que c'est le mot. Ouais, juste me sentir plus, hum, me sentir meilleur vraiment, juste parler en français. Et je pense que si j'ai pas aller à, si j'aurais pas allé à le, wow. Si j'aurais pas allé à le monde, j'aurais vraiment pas eu cette expérience. Um, et juste cette opportunité de améliorer mon français comme ça. Um, I feel like LeMond really allowed me to feel more connected to my French family because I'm actually a French-American. Um, and I think it just allowed me to feel more confident in my French and just better my French speaking skills. And I think because of LeMond, I can confidently say I'm bilingual, and I just, I think we'll be forever thankful that I went to that school. And yeah, that's kinda it. Thank you so much. Bye.
She said, whoa.
Trying to get that future tense in there correctly.
She's like, whoa.
I love how it looks. She switched from English to French. Almost feels like she had done it.
Yeah, by middle school, that's.
It was fluid. I mean, it, it was, it was literally fluid. She just went. It was beautiful. I loved it.
Do you wanna introduce?
And this is, um, one of our parents, who's actually also a board member, um, uh, Mark Williams, who said, submitted his video testimony.
Let me see if we can do something about that volume.
Yeah, I'll let you turn that off here.
That was because that was what he did.
Okay.
He set it that way.
I'm not gonna mess with him.
Okay, I'm just gonna give it a shot.
That's what I say. Go with it. Let's just go. See what happens.
Hello, my name is Mark Williams. I am a parent of three children who attend LeMond French Immersion Charter School. My children all started in kindergarten, and now, um, I have one in sixth grade and two in seventh grade. Uh, we chose to send our children to LeMond Immersion because my wife is French. She's originally from Toulouse. And we really value languages as a life skill. Uh, we also wanted a smaller school with a tight community, uh, because all my children have unique challenges and special abilities. My eldest daughter is in seventh grade, and she is Latinx. Um, she's extremely creative child who has been diagnosed with mild attention deficit disorder. LeMond French Immersion Charter School has always worked with us to help her thrive. My middle daughter is black, and she's hearing impaired, and she has been on an IEP since preschool and with the help of the teachers, um, at LeMond Immersion. Um, she is, um, receiving the PPS Special Education Services, uh, but she's excelling at LeMond Immersion. As a child who wears hearing aids and reads lips to communicate, you would think, um, that learning another language would be too much for her, but this has been only positive. So she is an amazing communicator in both languages. And the staff at, um, LeMond Immersion has always ensured that she has had the, um, all the accommodations in place to make her learning experience equal to her peers. My son, um, is 11, and, um, he is biracial, and he's in the sixth grade now. And his experience at LeMond has been very positive. Um, he is on a 504 plan for some health issues. And the staff at LeMond has always been accommodating and responsive to his needs. Um, we have been very pleased with the education our children are receiving, and the focused attention that teachers have been able to give each child has just been unmatched. Um, we just, I just wanna share with you that we're. We just want to share with you that we are very happy with LeMond. And it's a high-level school that I would recommend for any parent that is looking for a truly a French immersion school. Thank you.
They're good folks. And that was our presentation.
Fantastic. And was that so? Would I be concluding that the video with the 10 minutes in support? And at this time, with that being said, is there any testimony in opposition for this charter renewal? It's like the wedding ceremony where it's like, speak now, forever, hold your peace, because we're moving forward. Okay, are there any questions from my board committee members who are sitting out there in the ether?
No, I don't have any questions. I really feel like, especially Mr. Williams' testimony about his students and the way their special needs are supported was really helpful to sort of understand the robust nature of the services provided at LeMond. So thank you for including that testimony especially.
Okay, if there be no other questions and there be no other thoughts, then I believe this is where I get to say thank you. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you so much for all the work that you're doing and the kids that you're working with. And I'm excited about what this looks like. I'm supposed to say that this will conclude today's hearing, and the board is scheduled to vote on this renewal at the March 7th board meeting. Thank you, everyone, for showing up, and good night. Boom. Then I hit the gavel.
I should have prepped you.
Yeah, yes, I would have tried to read it.
Tara's the queen.
Yeah, the mean is adjourned.